Okay, I call this joint meeting of the Milwaukee City Council and the North Clackamas School District Board to order. We will do introductions in a minute here, but I have a little bit of a script that we're going to start with. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may watch this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will not be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to submit written comments, you may bring them to City Hall or email them to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando sea solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia, etc. Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. All right, so this is unusual. We haven't done this. I've been on council for, this is the start of my 10th year, and I only remember one or two of these before, so this is a nice, nice gathering. I'm glad to see everyone. We, we have, one of our counselors is on travel, and the, another is hopefully going to join us by Zoom, but I thought we would do introductions, so, I'll introduce, actually, we'll start at that end. Just introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. My name's Glenn Walker. I'm a school board member for North Clackamas School District, and I, driving here tonight, I thought, wow, I haven't driven on some of these streets since I was campaigning, and how welcoming and wonderful it was to be back in Milwaukee. So, thank you for having me here tonight.
Well, thanks for coming.
Mitzi Bauer, North Clackamas School Board, my eighth year, and thank you for having us. And I do remember one other, and that was it, since my time. And, thank you.
Adam Cossarabotti, Milwaukee City Councilor, and thank you all for being here.
Good evening, everyone. Kathy Way, I'm the current vice chair of the North Clackamas School Board, and it's just so great to see here and see many familiar faces and to be in a great partnership with the city. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Lisa Beatty, Mayor of Milwaukee.
April Dobson, North Clackamas School Board, thanks for having us.
Hi, sorry for being late. Tori McBay, North Clackamas School Board.
Hi, my name is Paul Kemp, North Clackamas School Board, first term. Thank you for having us. We're glad to be here.
Great. Well, thanks, everyone. We will start with a city overview by our city manager and assistant city manager, or maybe just our city manager.
I think our assistant city manager is going to be presenting a large portion of tonight's agenda, so she is making me do this by myself. So, first and foremost, welcome to Milwaukee. For those of you who, who didn't realize this, this is a brand-new building for us. We moved in here in September, and it's, it's been a delight and charming, and poor Scott's still figuring out some of the acoustics in the room. So, if we have issues, just point to him. He'll come help you out on any of the mics or any of the other Zoom issues that we are currently still trying to figure out. So, for those of you who haven't worked with us here at the city in the past, I just wanted to give you a brief overview of how our former government works and a little bit about our team who's here right now. As some of you know, we had a council member recently leave the board, so in early January, Desi Nekademas left the Milwaukee City Council. We're going to be appointing that seat, actually, I believe at the next meeting on Tuesday. So, right now, we have four council members. Two of those individuals are here today, the mayor, and Councilor Cossarabotti. Counselor Stavenyard is actually in DC for work. She works for Multnomah County, but she is going to be calling out in here in a little while. And then interim council president, he loves the really long title, so if you can say it often. Massey is actually traveling with family, so he will be returning next week. The role for the city manager is that I am hired is sort of like your superintendent. The board hires the superintendent. In this case, the council hires the city manager, and then I have an opportunity to work with 146 Milwaukee staff. So, we have one of the, well, we have several of those incredible humans in the room tonight, and you're going to hear from a few of them, but I did just want to call out that the one place where we have partnership in your buildings right now is actually Officer Heisel. Officer Heisel's here tonight. I wanted to just thank her for coming down and for her continued support and in this relationship and the work she does in our community. Seven years ago, when I, seven and a half years ago, when I came here, we had just started working on the Milwaukee Vision, and the mayor was involved in that. It was, it's actually very long, so I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but the first sentence really is the thing that we've been working towards ever since the vision of Milwaukee was set, and that is that in 2040, Milwaukee is a flourishing city that is entirely equitable, delightfully livable, and completely sustainable. And that's something that the council's been putting their energy and efforts towards ever since I've been here through council goals and collaboration with our community and with all of you. And currently, these are the three goals that are helping them accomplish that vision. So, currently, the council has a goal around equity, justice, and inclusion, climate change mitigation and resilience, and then improving our park systems and services. Those are things that we are trying to make headway on and trying to make change here at the city around. I would defer to the council members and the mayor to actually speak to those in more depth in the future, but they are where we spend a lot of our time and efforts right now. We also are spending a lot of time around a strategic planning effort internally to the staff to try and help us align to that vision and to the council's goals. And tonight, I actually just really want to emphasize one that's at the very end of it, because I think it's a part of what brings us both the council's goals and the work that we're asking you all to join us in tonight, and that is helping Milwaukans most in need. You all do a lot through your work at the Wichita Center, but also in every classroom. And I think it's a shared goal for the council and for the, the school board, and we wanted to talk to you about some opportunities. I know we're going to hear from Ardenwald tonight as a core city service and a core community service. So, we're really excited that we had an opportunity to bring everyone in tonight and to continue this important work, both from the city side and from the school side. You're going to hear in a little while about some exciting things that are also happening here in Milwaukee. Tonight, we've got our community development director will be joining our new assistant city manager. For those of you who haven't had a chance to work with Emma Sager, she's incredible. You can't have her. Her mother was actually an assistant superintendent, so you really can't have her, but she has been such a, an incredible blessing to this community and is just doing incredible work. So, I'm excited to see where we all go, and I also, just because I have the dais for a moment, want to call out just the continuing incredible relationship I have with your leadership team. Both Shay and Cindy are regular, regularly talking to me and trying to figure out how we can better our communities together, and you really lucked out with both of them. So, with that, I'm actually going to hand this over to Dr. James.
Can I just brush this paper to move it?
I have to, just a minute.
Okay. Get that.
It will just be, I think that...
Okay.
So, I think you just hit that button down there.
Thank you. I can do that. I can hit a button. Yes. Good evening, Milwaukee City Council and the North Clackamas School District Board of Directors. As it's been said already, thank you so much for hosting us, and we really look forward to the continued partnership as, as you heard your city manager mention as well. There we go. Our North Clackamas School District is governed by seven volunteers, Board of Directors, in which you are sitting with, and as a collective, their main priorities include, but are not limited to, our strategic plan, direction, budget oversight, policy, and really representing our community's interest and listening and hearing to what's important and taking that feedback, as many of you are also aware of that. Some folks are surprised to learn about the territory that North Clackamas School District covers and serves within our school district. It stretches from Carver and Damascus on the east side, all the way to Selwood and Gladstone on the west side. Our district covers more than 40 square miles and is also organized into four high school feeder patterns. And so here on this slide, you can see the Milwaukee High School and its feeder patterns that are highlighted in orange, and which are here in the city of Milwaukee. North Clackamas School District is the sixth-largest school district in the state of Oregon, and to give some context to that, we're six out of 197 school districts across our state. We serve approximately 17,000 students with over 77 languages spoken. 23% of our students are English language learners. 17% of our students have a disability. 43% of our students are students of color, and 26% are economically disadvantaged. And so, some of the things that we've been partnering with you on, and that I know that we will hear about tonight in terms of supporting families. In addition, we have over 2,000 employees at North Clackamas School District that really carry out the mission of the district in supporting our Here you can see our strategic plan, which was newly updated in the year of 2022. It is the primary driver of our school district priorities, and our mission statement, which you can see here, has, has remained relatively consistent over the years with this new rendition. We did add three words, act with courage, in addition to what was already there. And you can, our vision was built upon, our vision statement was built upon relationships, honoring cultural heritage, and fostering well-being to inspire creative thinkers, and you can see it in its entirety here as well. And really much like your mission and vision, equity is the connecting through line of our strategic plan and all that we, we do for our students and our families. Here you see our four strategic points. The first one, student experience and success, people and culture, resources and services, family and community and collaboration. And under all four of these points, we have additional goals that we are striving to meet for each of our students and our family. In addition to that, you see the core values that we live by at the bottom, that encompass relationship, care, equity, integrity, and empowerment. And we've been rolling those out in our school district this year, every two months, and we're really seeing them come alive across our district in our school buildings and people talking and, and living by these core values. So, that's been an exciting thing that's been happening as we've moved. And finally, I would just say, we have some pretty unique programming in our district that aligns to our strategic plan, and you can see some of them here, bilingual programs and, and others, but I would say most notably, you're probably familiar with our CTE programs at Saban Schellenberg, in which students can participate in one or more of 18 programs that we have there, 18 pathways, which really, we know is a key indicator to supporting students and graduating from high school. And so, it's one of those things we really try to get all of our students involved in if we can. And in addition to that, another key program that I'll point out that you're well aware of is our Student and Family Support Services, which are housed out of our Wichita Center, and you're going to hear a little bit more about that tonight. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you for being a partner in the work and look forward to any questions you have this evening. Thank you. Thank you. So, next, we hear from the Ardenwald Elementary School, and NCSD Executive Director of Elementary Programs, Patricia Erns, and others, I believe. And let me, while they're getting set up, let me just say two things. Our microphones, you have to have it be red to be heard. You have to have this red light come on to push the ability to talk, and there's only so many that can be on at once, so I will try to start turning mine off so that other people can get theirs on, but just so you know that. And then these things are the equivalent of the name tag that you sometimes set on end when you want to talk. This is how you signal that you want to ask a question, okay? Thank you.
I think we've got enough.
You can sit, no, no, you sit here.
I'll sit, I'll stand.
Okay.
Is that you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sarah.
Thank you.
Bethany is up there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening to our friends of the city of Milwaukee and Board of Directors. We are very excited to be here tonight and share with you the work that we do in our schools. Joining me tonight is the Ardenwald Principal, Rosina Hardy, and I will let her know, I will let her introduce her team, so they will be sharing with you all the wonderful things that are happening at Ardenwald. Thank you.
And I'm going to stand if that's okay? Okay. So, first of all, we do want to express that we're very excited to be here tonight, so thank you for this opportunity. And to kick us off, I want to induce our presentation team that is here tonight. So, we have Amy Miller Knight, who is a structured learning center primary teacher, and she's going to wave and smile. They'll all wave and smile as I introduce them one by one. Next to her, we have Bethany Messina. She's a first grade teacher. Next to her, we have Colleen Sacco. She is our assistant principal. She does that duty among three schools, actually. Next to her, we have Sarah Powers, our instructional coach. And then we have me, Rosina Hardy, Principal of Ardenwald. And again, thank you for this opportunity for us to share some of our school highlights and what makes Ardenwald unique. We will start with our school mission, so I'll just read Ardenwald School, School's mission, and it says, "It's to ensure that all students learn and experience success by creating caring, creating caring and trusting relationships, celebrating efforts, and encouraging risk-taking." Some of what makes us unique and some of our highlights that we'll address tonight include aspects of literacy, inclusion, and our PTO family partnerships. And I do want to say that all of this incorporates and integrates our school values, our student voices... our student voices, and definitely our parent partnership. All of those things are interwoven throughout all that we do and are very important. Before we get into discussing our highlights and what makes us unique tonight, you'll hear about that a little bit from our presenters tonight. I do want to take a moment to share who we are. We are a Title I school. We are a school with a student enrollment of about 411, give and take a few, with the fluctuation of going and coming across the last few days and months. We are a school with a white population as its largest student ethnicity, race and ethnicity, at about 65%. And by comparison, our largest non-white race and ethnicity student population is our Hispanic population, and that's at 17%. And by comparison, our smallest non-white race and ethnicity student population is our Pacific Islander. That's 0.2%. So we're talking one student. Now, as we consider other expressions of our population across Ardenwald School, we can look at these categories of demographics. We have about 20 students being served with English language supports. We have about 90 students receiving specialized designed instruction in our program. We have about 23 students receiving specialized instruction in our structured learning classrooms. Have one of our wonderful teachers of that program here tonight, Amy Miller Knight. We have likewise just over 200 male students in that demographic grouping. And then just under 200 female students in that demographic grouping. And then it's important for us to note and recognize that we have two students who currently identify as non-binary in our school program. More about who we are, as we consider the staff supporting all of these important students in our school. We have new this year, one and a half, the half part is new, learning resource specialists serving our students. We have two structured learning educators. We have one speech pathologist. We have a part-time para educator supporting our speech pathologists. We have one part-time, and this is also new this year, one virtual school psychologist. One part-time bilingual para educator. We have eight gen ed para educators, 11 para educators, one counselor, one instructional coach. And then all together, serving all of our students in a collaborative format, we have 25 educators. Now I want to shift our attention to our areas of growth. Our areas of growth include, in part, across our school program, I'll say that these are some of the areas of growth included in our school program. Our areas of growth, which I'll talk about in just a moment, are communicated in our school improvement plan. And these areas of growth in particular are based on our benchmark assessment data from the fall and then also our spring youth truth survey results. I also want to take a moment to recognize and state that we are moving currently from our previous universal benchmark assessment, which was called STAR, as you may know, to our new universal benchmark assessment, and that is called FastBridge. And in just a little bit, from our instructional coach, you'll hear a little bit more about that around our literacy highlight. As we think about our overarching school improvement areas of growth, I want to emphasize that that is inclusive of our academics, both reading and math, and our family engagement, our partners. First, in reading and math, looking at our fall benchmark assessment data results, we see, it tells us some things and some things that we can take away, is that all of the scores, for the most part, are below 60%, with the exception of one score hovering over 60 at 64%. And that is our third grade fall math assessment results. Another thing we can learn is that about all of our scores range, in the 50% range, either high or low, with the exception of one score, and that was our incoming fifth graders at the beginning of the year, who scored at a 48% achievement score in reading. And then all of our scores, as it relates to our state's long-term achievement goal of 80% proficiency, all of our scores are below that. And so with that said, I want to state and let it be recognized that our aim also is towards achieving that target of 80% proficiency. It's important for me to say that it is our utmost hope and desire that all of our students improve. Without doubt, we want to enclose, we want to close that achievement gap that exists. Without doubt, we want to improve outcomes for all of our students. And without doubt, we want to center all the work that we do, no matter what it is, always around our students, which can be complicated, and it's very much worth the work. Now we'll move for a moment to our other overarching area of growth for our school improvement, and that is engaging our families. And so as we think about our families and consider our spring, our last spring youth truth survey results, our families told us that this was an area for us to improve. One of the questions that our families were asked was this question that's presented here, and it says, "I feel empowered to play a meaningful role in decision-making in my school." So this was a Likert scale assessment. And our families told us, with the results here say, and that's, that 32% were able to authentically give a positive percent rate. That told us that this is an area of growth. One of the exciting things, as this has resulted in the formation of a team led by parents called the Community Action Team. This was, it's also worth noting that this was also a part of our participating families on our school site council. They said, "We want to do something about this," and this is what came out of that. And they have as a goal for themselves, for us, for our school community of families, to increase that engagement. We'll measure that based on what our families say. We've got that youth truth survey happening again now. Now I want to shift our attention to our student voices. And I want to say that not only are we empowering our families, we are also empowering our students, asking them to amplify their voices, to have that courage to say what they're thinking. And now I want to read to our directors and the Ardenwald community members that unfortunately, we were unable to play our videos that we have. This was one of the videos. We plan to send it out to our community soon after this presentation. It was a video where our Ardenwald students connect to our district's core values. However, we're hoping that you had a chance to view it. We're so very proud of our students because they're identifying in their own words what our core values mean to them. And so far, as a school and as a district, we've defined relationships. We've defined care, and most recently, we've defined equity. So I'm excited, I'm sure we can all say we're excited to see how we define the final two core values for our district and for our school. And that is the core value of empowerment and integrity. And with that said, I want to switch us to the focus of our attendance. And I'm going to call up Colleen Sacco, our Assistant Principal.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and to share all of our points of pride about Ardenwald Elementary. It's great to see so many familiar and new faces and great to be with City Council as well as our school board this evening. So I am super excited. I was asked to speak about our attendance at Ardenwald. And I just want to start with, first of all, showing our, just our friend there, just so excited, ready to be at school. And that is our goal and our hope for all of our Ardenwald students is that they're at school consistently, on time, ready to learn, ready to grow. And one point of pride that I want to show you on our slide here is a piece of data, and then I'll go into a little bit more details about our attendance program at Ardenwald. But as you can see here, at the end of 2223, we had 61% of our students attending 90% or more school days. And when we looked at that same data point, granted at the end of January, but just a few weeks ago, we had 75% of our Ardenwald students are attending 90% or more days. So for us, that feels like a huge increase, as well as certainly a long ways to go. We'd like to see that number even higher, but to see the growth from the end of last school year to January is a point of pride. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what that is attributed to. So we have an attendance team at Ardenwald made up of myself, our Assistant Secretary Stephanie Reedy, and our Counselor Ming Hong. And then, of course, all of our amazing staff members at Ardenwald support the efforts as well. Our goal, I know it's a little bit hard to see, but the team meets regularly to support students, thank you, students and families with consistent school attendance to support student growth and collaborate with staff around strategies for attendance improvement. So some of the primary reasons families make it for absences, we know illness happens, family trips, dental medical appointments. Sometimes it's not specified or communicated why students are gone. But some of the things we've done as an attendance team to ensure that when kids are healthy, they're attending school consistently, on time. The district, we are grateful, supports with a lot of communication. One of the flyers they sent out is "Too Sick For School", so just identifying when is it appropriate for a student to stay home and when can they come back to school. And I think especially given COVID in recent years, that decision-making has been more challenging. So we partner with families to determine when is it okay to be here and when should kids stay home. Attendance Works is a resource we use as well, just basically educating, working with families around how important it is to come to school. We are grateful to our teachers and our staff. We have asked them to take some time during staff meetings to call families, to communicate. We know that teachers are the closest to our students and our families. So to have conversations about how can we support, how can we collaborate, what are the barriers, what do you need? So they've done a great job working with families. We've also, at conferences, we had flyers talking about, like, here's how many days have been missed, just to kind of see what that looks like. And again, always coming from a place of support when we discuss attendance with families. We have extended support from the team. We do things called care calls, just reaching out, helping with families to identify what are the barriers to attendance and how can we help? For example, where's your local bus stop? Is there a family that lives nearby that you could go to the bus stop together in the mornings to help kids to school on time? And in that way, we identify interventions and supports that we can provide to improve student attendance, which ultimately, we know positively impacts our student growth and achievement and success. So again, we're proud of the improvement, but we look forward to even more continued growth in this area with student attendance at Ardenwald. Thank you. And now I'm passing the mic to Sarah Powers, our amazing instructional coach, to talk more about her support at Ardenwald. So thanks again.
As Hardy shared earlier, some of our fall benchmark scores in FastBridge, our new assessment system for the district. And I just wanted to dig a little deeper into those numbers and see, and show you some growth that our school has made. At Ardenwald, we're actively embracing data literacy as teachers. We foster collaboration to identify challenges and enhance overall school culture and climate, and bridge the gap between student learning and infectional, effective instructional strategies. Our focus extends to pinpointing areas where students may need additional support by leveraging data to facilitate growth. Cultivating a culture of data literacy and informed teaching practices create profound interconnectedness between teaching, learning, and our broader community, ensuring a more holistic and impactful educational experience for all. Turning our attention to this chart, up here, you'll see that in the fall, we had 54% of our students at benchmark. And now we have 59% of our students in second grade at benchmark. This is just a small sampling. But if we take a closer look at that data and we think about those students who aren't quite there yet, we can see that here is their current scores. But if we look over here on this fall, fall, far column, that purple color indicates the amount of growth they've made. So even though they may not yet be at benchmark, their growth is tremendous. All but one student in the second grade classroom is making typical or even aggressive growth. So our teachers are doing the right thing. The work that they're doing is effective. And we just need to figure out what next. How can we just push this a little bit farther? So even though we're still not there yet, we're seeing our students make tremendous growth, even to the 95th percentile of aggressive growth there. So it's so, it's been so fun to look deeper into the data with our new system and really kind of see, okay, this is working, now what? And so now we're using our PLCs, our MTSS data team meetings. After school, after work, optional sessions happen monthly with our teachers. We have teachers going to university classes. Our teachers are making this shift happen for our literacy scores to grow. One exemplary, this is another video that was shared earlier. Teacher that we have up here is Karen Feta. She worked this summer with our district to make units of study for literacy and writing. And she has developed units all the way and to deliver them. She brings writing to life in our school by establishing a purpose, helping students find their voice, inviting family members in for writing celebrations throughout the year. I hope you have a chance to see her in action in this video. So we're doing all the right things. Our students are growing. And we're just going to keep pushing to that next level. Speaking of extraordinary teachers, I would like to introduce Ms. Amy Miller Knight and Ms. Bethany Messina, two extraordinary teachers that have hearts of gold. And they're building our community and growing our students in another terrific way. So I'm going to turn it over to them now.
Good evening. After hearing all this, I am so incredibly proud to be part of North Clackamas and also living within Milwaukee City limits. The Ardenwald community knows me as Teacher Amy. I am the Structured Learning Primary Teacher. Alongside my fabulous team, we serve 12 students that experience a spectrum of disability, have complex communication and sensory needs, and primarily access their learning through a modified curriculum. Within Ardenwald's vision statement, you have this value of providing an inclusive educational experience. So how does that come to life? How does that exist beyond just a poster that serves as a reminder? My colleague and now friend, Bethany Messina, without reservation, became my partner, my collaborator, and our buddy class. To Ms. Messina's first grade scholars, we are not the Structured Learning Center. We are the students of Room 103. Together, we have made beautiful art that is now being displayed in the district office. We play together. We build marble runs and Legos. We even pulled noodle drum to none other than Taylor Swift. And there's a video clip when you guys are able to enjoy that. We practice daily phonetic awareness. We chop sounds and blends. We organically exist together, a community of very diverse learners. We celebrate our differences and embrace our similarities.
Is this going to work? And I think that our inclusive coexistence has its foundation in communication, both expressive and receptive. My first grade scholars are communicators. We spend class circles learning about practicing different ways that people communicate. My scholars know that you can communicate with words. You can communicate with sounds, with eye contact, with body movements, anything. And my scholars are really in tune to Teacher Amy's scholars, and they have a level of communication that is just amazing to see. And communicators, we all know, and my first graders have learned too, is that communicators don't just do the talking, they also have to do the listening. And we've learned that not everyone listens the same way. You know, in first grade, we learned about whole body listening. You listen with your eyes, you listen with your ears, and you listen with a still body. But we, so that's what we practice as listeners. But we also know that not everyone listens the same way. Our buddy class, their listening is a little bit different than my first grade scholar's class. And my students are receptive to that, and we just all get along. As the year progresses, Teacher Amy and I have discovered that our, that getting our students together doesn't feel like an inclusion activity. If I have an awesome art project, I say, "Hey, Amy, I've got this project. Let's do it." And we figure out a way to make it happen. You have to see the owl babies at the district office because they are just unbelievable. We're going on a field trip this summer to Tryon Creek Nature Preserve, or I can't remember the official title. the official title. And Teacher Amy, what do we need to do to make it happen? She's going to take her own specialized transportation, we're going to take our bus, we're going to meet there, and we're going to have a lovely field trip experience together. An all-school assembly is coming up, and the first grade is performing a piece for the assembly. We're singing a song and talk to Teacher Amy, and we're going to make it work. We're going to have all of our kids up there together. If I ever have any questions, or if I ever, you know, we want to do something, I always go with, hey, Amy! And then we work together, and we bring some amazing things to life. We found that you don't need to hunt for inclusion activities. Just keep an open mind, and they're out there just waiting for you. I think that's why our buddy experiences are so powerful. Our scholars come together to share experiences, to learn from each other, and to celebrate each other, and it's joy in its purest form. There's a video of pool noodle drumming that will just, just take your breath away, so I hope you have a chance to see.
Well, not only am I the instructional coach at Ardenwald, I'm also a parent of two students now, one moved on to RAO that is also at Ardenwald. So our PTO president couldn't be here tonight, she ended up being sick, but she's been a part of our PTO and school community for over 15 years, and I'm just going to share a little bit about how our PTO is involved at Ardenwald. So PTO provides many family engagement activities, such as the Family Social this Friday night, where students and families can come and socialize and dance to the jams with our very own DJ Rins, our music teacher. There are always plenty of volunteer opportunities with many events throughout the year. We are lucky to have an amazing group of volunteers, and our PTO board is something else. Ardenwald PTO loves to host community engagement, community engaging fundraisers, so we can give back to the students and provide playground equipment, Oregon Battle of the Books, books, snacks, and much more. They're also able to give back to the amazing staff at Ardenwald by providing classroom materials, books, and volunteering for the teachers. They show love and appreciation through coffee and pastry days, special staff lunches, and small gestures throughout the year. This year, we also have a newly formed committee that Rosina mentioned called the Community Action Team. Their goal is to strengthen access to academic and social emotional support to all students by creating pathways to connect teachers and school staff to our family and our communities. So they have been working really hard, and I'm excited to see how these two organizations continue to support and build strength in our community engagement at Ardenwald.
So now we're rounding the corner, and we are now at thinking about opportunities for Ardenwald as we move forward. And what I want to say, what we want to say and communicate is that we want to continue the PLC alignment work that's happening this year and make sure that we're making that robust as we continue forward. We want to dig deeper into our FastBridge data. We want to continue creating sustainable family engagement. We want to do that hard, important work of reflecting on disaggregating data to improve our school instructional decisions, as well as our decisions across our systems within our school program. And I will say above all, we want to continue living in our highest potential together each and every day. Knowing where our growth opportunities are, our forward actions are listed here, will be the focus of our work, so they pretty much mirror our opportunities. They'll be our focus of our work and our improvement towards ultimately improving student outcomes. So again, we always want to keep our student, all the work that we do with our, around our students and our students at the center. And coupled with that, we want to continue doing our best to collaborate together across all of our school systems so that we can live in our highest potential together as we're working towards producing better outcomes and closing that achievement gap. With that, I want to again say thank you so much for this opportunity for us to share Ardenwald with you, our highlights and what makes us unique, and we want to provide some time for you to ask our presentation team some questions.
Great, thank you very much. Pardon? Yeah, that's where you used the thing. I'm gonna, yeah, thank you very much. I will take questions, and I'll start with Ms. Thompson.
Thank you all so much for your hard work that you put into this gathering the data and sharing it with us tonight. So, I mean, some of the numbers are hard to look at, and I know that you know that already. So I want to say two things. One is we don't set lower expectations for our students when they come from historically marginalized communities or communities struggling with poverty. And so I'm happy to hear, you know, that, that we're, you know, keeping those expectations high and reaching for the goals, you know, that will lift as, as many of these kids and families up as possible. But I also want to say that sometimes when your students are struggling with the kinds of things that it seems like a lot of the kids in your communities are struggling with, it's a really big win to provide an environment for them where they feel safe and cared for and important, and it's clear to me that you're doing that. So I appreciate all of the work that you're doing.
Mr. Rockton?
Thank you, Mayor. Principal Hardy, Dan's Ardenwald All-Stars, can I say that? What a great presentation! I was just joyful listening to what the 411 beautiful and worthy students are treated to in this, this amazing presentation. It was so, so informative, but also so visionary of what can be achieved for these specific students, and it just, it just warms my heart so much. They are absolutely worth the work, is the phrase that you've used, and I just thank you for saying those words. It's true about all of our students in North Clackamas schools, but specifically these students. One of the statistics that you shared was the, the family engagement score, which I know drives a lot of other indicators and, and outcomes along the way. Can you say a little more about the drivers of that lower score, that 30-something percent, I think it was, and some of the tactics that you are applying to raise that score? And is there anything that the school board members can do to help support that?
Yes, I appreciate that question and that wondering, because that is an important driver within our school program, our families, their voices and what they think. I know that our instructional coach, Sarah, has been working closely with that particular team, and so she would, she would love to share some ideas with you.
So that number really dropped because of COVID. And then we came back from COVID, and we had really strict protocols about how we had people in our building and how we could keep people healthy and safe. And so we saw that steep decline at that time, and so we are working on getting not only more people into the building, but really focusing on that decision-making. So there was other community engagement rated higher in our Youth True Survey, but the one that we really wanted to focus on is how can we empower our families to feel that they're making decisions? So we started a community action team last spring, and I met with them over the summer, and we're just building this program bigger and bigger. We have now a directory of parents that have special talents that they want to come in and share. We have a parent coming in to do art because she's an artist with a class, and we have a parent coming in to do bystander and upstanders lesson this coming week. So we've been building this directory of what talents are in our community that we can ask to come in and share with us. We have parents now that are coming and hanging out at recess, facilitating games, and some of those recesses that need a little bit extra adult interactions, right? And so we've got some recess help coming in, and so we've been really working on getting people in, but also getting them in in ways that feels meaningful and mutually beneficial, not just like, can you make these copies? Or can you grade this spelling test? But ways that the, it's a mutual beneficial thing, so we feel like a community, because we know the effect of having a community involved in the school is priceless. And I'm, I know there's tons of research out there that I can't quote directly that shows how important family involvement is. And so we're doing all of the things, and, you know, it's our first year in this, so it's been, you know, a great start, and we know we have lots of work to go. And so I'm just really excited about the potential of this program, and we're, we're intentionally really being thoughtful about how we push this forward so that it's really meaningful and not something that just like fizzles out.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Great responses, and I'm betting Ardenwald will achieve much, much higher scores real soon. Thank you.
Absolutely. No passion there at all.
I see we have some other geese up, but I'm going to take the prerogative of the chair and ask my questions first. So there were a lot of acronyms in here, every organization has its acronyms, and there were several in your package that I was like, what does that mean? But most of them cleared up for me, except one you used in these slides, which was PLC. What is that?
PLC. PLC is our professional learning community, and that's where teachers get together and discuss what assessments are telling us, what students need, will we consider the whole child, and what specifically, especially this year, are the key leveraged instructional moves we can make within our core curriculum.
Okay, great, thank you. I, you know, I had a lot of questions about the, you know, some of the numbers and stuff, but I guess the one I will ask is the attendance numbers, which were kind of shocking to me, actually, as the child of a mother who never let me miss school, ever, ever. Is that kind of average for the district? I mean, is that, is that not a shocking number, 75, 60 to 70% attending 90?
I can't speak to the data for the other schools. I'd be happy to look that up and write it because it's a great question, I'm curious as well. I can speak to, I think, where some of the numbers are coming from. I think there is, there, when we were in distance learning and then came back from distance learning, there was sort of evolving when kids could come to school or not, and so I think we are trying to be really clear now about when kids can come or can't come. And I'm, you know, I'm a parent, and I have three kids in the district, you know, and I notice that, you know, there's a runny nose, but runny nose is going to last for three, you know, so really, again, partnering with our families, so not to say, you know, yes, no, do, don't, but say, we are all on the same team. I tell families that all the time, right? You know, your student, we all want the same thing, we want your child at school being successful, so let's work together to see why they're not coming to school and what can we do to help. So I think that's one piece. I also think, always, but in the last few years, the mental health of our students and our families has been impacted. So, you know, some of these conversations are, my child feels nervous about coming to school or anxious to come to school, or we're in early start school, you know, it's hard to get them up in the morning, right? So there's like, there are a lot of those barriers that we, again, partner with families. We have a program, Stronger Oregon, that provides counseling to students within the school day. So sometimes if you, if you talk to a family and have a conversation about, you know, my child's feeling anxious about coming to school, can we set you up with Stronger Oregon, which is a fantastic program, a third party that comes into our school, to maybe talk through what some of those worries are, and we've seen really great improvement with some of our kids. So I agree, the numbers are shocking, and when I think about instruction and student achievement and growth, like, kids have to be at school to access and learn and, and participate in all the great activities that Bethany and Amy spoke to. So I agree, I was, I was encouraged by the progress, and I'd like to see that number a lot higher.
And can I just ask a short thing? As a classroom teacher, the numbers shocked me because I look at my class, and I think I have great attendance, and I truly do, but you have one or two children who miss huge amounts of schooling, and you're working with those parents a lot and with their families, but they can make the numbers skew really, really low, it feels, because I was absolutely shocked, because I can tell you, I've got 20 kids in my class, and I don't, I have one chronically under attending child, and then the rest are there, feels like every day, because, you know, first grade, it's a busy place, there are lots of bodies in there. So just the numbers shocked me as a classroom teacher, because I feel like I have great attendance, it's just the one or maybe two scholars, I call them student scholars, students who aren't there on a regular basis, that can really, I feel like, skew the numbers to seem much lower than what I feel like our attendance really is. It's, I was surprised as well.
And so that's part of what we'll do as the attendance team as well, we'll pull reports and say, okay, but you know, for Ms. Messina's class, who are the kids that have missed? You know, we moved them, you know, 15 or more days up to this point. Okay, here, Bethany, here's 20 minutes during a staff meeting, here's your kids that have missed so many days or more, can you be the first contact, be the first outreach? Let us know how that conversation goes, what's happening, and then support, meet the family where they are, support the family from there with.
And we are so wraparound in our caring of our school and their family, that oftentimes it won't be the first communication when we get that extra 20 minutes to call them. It would be a follow-up of a follow-up of a follow-up, because, you know, we're, we're in close contact with our parents.
Absolutely.
Great, well, thank you very much. And my last question is, I've known people who, thinking about reading scores, I've known people who did these volunteer programs where they came in and read with a kid, they were paired with a kid, and they came in once a week or whatever. Are those useful? Do you want more parents to do that, or do they take more time to set up than they create benefit?
We currently have SMART, the reading program, coming into Ardenwald and working with our primary students, and we do have other things that we're doing, like Oregon Battle of the Books. So we have some parents reading some Oregon Battle of the Books for our 3-5 students. We never turn away volunteers. So we are celebrating reading the week before spring break. We have something called RAW, Read Across Ardenwald Week, and we're inviting all kinds of community members to come in and read and celebrate the joys of reading, and so any of you are welcome. I will send you an invitation to come in and read and show how important it is in our community. We love having guest readers. Right now, we have some of the Rose City rollers coming in to read on roller skates, so it's going to be a very joyous week. So I hope that you all can make time to come in.
Well, I won't come on roller skates, but I will come. All right, Mr. McVay?
Thank you. Great presentation. I'm 100% confident that the scores will improve, and I'm so happy you're focusing on attendance, because not only are they not learning, but they're not contributing, and they all have stories that they can contribute to their teammates. But I really just wanted to say thank you for the deliberate use of scholar. I don't think many people think of a kindergarten or first grader as a scholar, and if they can start thinking themselves the scholar early on, it's going to pay dividends, so thank you for that.
Mr. Kemp?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. One of the things that I was just curious about and making sure I understand it, the 32% engagement number, and, and having a meaningful role in decision-making, is that, is it a decision-making role, or is it just the ability to volunteer or being welcomed to come in and volunteer? Is that more what it is versus decision-making?
So the Youth True Survey has a slew of questions, and so it goes from, I feel involved, all the way to the decision-making phase of that, so it kind of like builds on itself. And so we had higher readings, like, I feel involved, I feel welcomed, I feel appreciated, those had higher readings. Where we really wanted to focus our energy was more of that decision-making empowerment and value of the connection with each other.
And I'll add to that and say that it, it's really more about having impact and influence and having a voice in the decisions that we're making at the school. And so it's giving space for that and then allowing something to happen where they see that they have made an impact.
I see. And I was wondering more, just because of, I think a lot of people have, their minds have changed with COVID and being more engaged and getting out, because we're so used to being kind of recluses in the home and so on, and it takes a while to break out of that. And I just remember when my kids were in school, as many opportunities as I could, I would go in to volunteer, but it, it's, it's hard, and it, it takes time depending on your job. And I was just wondering if this is unique coming out of COVID versus maybe what it had been before, and whether or not those scores are available, I don't know, but I'm just curious if that maybe is the reason, is just coming out of COVID.
And I would say there definitely is a connection. We've heard a lot of our families talking about that. Even this morning, I heard that reference as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I think Counselor Kosterbadi was the next one up.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for your presentation and the work you do. It's, I mean, you can't say enough, right? It's, I mean, you can't say enough, right? Because when you talk about frontline workers, I mean, teachers are that, educators are that, and administrators are that. So I appreciate everything you're doing. It's tough to see the numbers, but the children are in good hands, great hands, I should say. So I'm not concerned myself. What struck me and what sticks with me the most is the 26% economically disadvantaged students that was in Dr. James's presentation prior. Because I know some of that percentage is students at Ardenwald, I'm sure. And I know cities obviously don't create policies for schools and I wish. But if there's anything that we can do to help in getting the right legislator or putting something together to find out what those barriers are. Because I, I mean, it's, it's easy to make the connection that some of those low numbers have to do with that, right? There's a struggle in every home. And I think the better we are at being able to speak about that and make sure that the decision-makers don't get numb to it is important. And I know it's on a long list of crises, but these crises are all tied together. And the sooner we're able to realize that, that it all comes full circle, the better off we'll be. So if there's anything we can do to advocate, make connections, relationships, there's somebody you don't like that I can talk to, maybe they'll like me. I'm willing to, whatever it takes to provide for these children. I'm a new father myself, so this is important to me. I was also a disadvantaged student, was embarrassed to show up to school. So I understand what that's like, so I'm all ears. Absolutely.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for this presentation. And I also agree that some of the numbers were a little bit hard to digest. But I just see so much enthusiasm and growth and positivity and care, right? Very much caring for our students, caring for our school community that you all bring. You all are in just extremely important positions, not only in your schools and in the classroom, but in this community. So my comments are really around just that continued family and community engagement piece. I look at the city of Milwaukee and it's so incredibly diverse. And that diversity is beautiful. And I know that this is a welcoming city and it continues to be a welcoming space. And so I hope that we can continue to carry that theme of, you know, welcoming inclusivity in our schools. And one of the things that, this is just an idea and I'm sure you are already thinking about it or doing it, is bringing those parent voices, those parents who may never feel like, okay, you know, I can be a part of that committee or I can, you know, contribute to the discussion. And I used to be a community organizer and I wish that Counselor Stavengord was here because before we ever became these elected people or however you call them, I actually met her through community organizing. She was very much involved with a lot of the youth commissions and just youth efforts happening. And I was involved with various school districts as a youth and family support engagement specialist. And we were always just trying to find ways to partner up with things that were happening in the schools. But also how do we connect them back into our parks? And the places that families gather and play. And so I think there's a lot of synergy that can happen with our families particularly. Also, you know, families that English might not be a first language to them. Just, I know that food brings a lot of people together. So even if it's like hosting, you know, international potlucks and, you know, just again, bringing those families in who may not feel like, okay, you know, I can contribute, right? I think is so important. So anyways, thank you so much for your presentation. And I know Counselor Stavengord is not here, but we definitely go way back over 10 years, 15 years of just, you know, trying to ask these questions together. And so it's just amazing that I can share this space with her, even though she's not here physically. But she's a former Ardenwald parent. Yes, yes. I know her well. I think she's under the subtitles. Hi. Thank you.
Okay, she is here. All right, Director Bauer?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with all the comments that were made. And it's just so obvious that you all care, that came through so loud and clear. You're great role models with the teamwork and calling your students scholar, the respectfulness just comes through so loud and clear. And I love your plans. I mean, I'm confident too that you will succeed. You've addressed every one of those numbers and the concerns and you had a plan. So my hat off to you. That attendance, you need them in school to learn, right? And you have a plan to get them there and you're addressing it. So congratulations on a great presentation. I did look at the videos, they're charming. And I think that students had the best definitions of integrity and empowerment. They were so wise. The integrity is, do you take the donut or not? You know, when they're not there. I thought, oh yeah, that is good. And the empowerment was, yeah, you could talk to the counselor, but, and they don't do it for you. You need the power to learn how to do it for yourself. I mean, she said it even better than that. I don't remember her words, but exactly. But you're doing great work. You're building these, these children up to be our leaders. And you have that key too, that we know we have to meet their needs, all of their needs, all of those basic needs. They need to be ready to learn when they come. They can't be hungry, they need a home, they need good healthcare. They need all of those resources, they need the mental health. And you're putting it all together, but we need help support you and continue those services uninterrupted. Thank you.
Mayor Beatty, Counselor Stavengord's hand is raised on doom. Hard to see.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Oh, not great. Okay, how about now?
No, no, loud and clear, loud and clear.
Everyone's ducking now. I'm so sorry I can't be there in person, but it's great to see everyone, at least virtually. And hey, my favorite all-stars, I wish I could give you hugs in person. You are all so amazing. We, yeah, we had a student that graduated from, from Ardenwald. And when I think about really what they were able, that they were able to take on so much growth when they were there. And I think it's a true testament to the community that Ardenwald builds. Our kiddo had such an increased sense of community, caring for each other, independence, responsibility. I mean, we loved Mrs. Beatty's class. I remember going in as one of the parent volunteers and teaching a class of third graders about the 2020 census. And oh my gosh, they, by the end of the session, they were like all, the first thing they were going to do when they got home was look for that census card and tell their parents all about it because at that age, they just want to boss us around. So, and I think about like the green team and the obab teams and just the care that the staff and the teachers and the PTO put into building a sense of belonging at the school. The dances are epic. If you've ever, if you ever have a moment and you want to chaperone, the most wild experience, chaperone a dance at Ardenwald is amazing. We, and one of the things that I think, you know, still kind of makes me tear up a little bit is during COVID, you know, the, the teachers and the staff put together a social distance parade at the end of the year. We also picked up, you know, school supplies in a social distancing sort of way, but, you know, in a way that still kept that connection in place. And I just, I'm so appreciative of that. And, you know, like I said, I wish that I could be there in person in Washington DC, talking with folks about the types of resources that need to be sent out to our cities and counties in Oregon. And one of the things that comes to mind for me around the, a really strong need in Milwaukee is around childcare. And the mayor and I were looking at some childcare numbers earlier today. And, you know, when it comes to subsidized or, or, you know, publicly regulated childcare slots, we really have a serious need in Clackamas County. So my question is, you know, how can we help? How, how can we assist with the limited capacity? And what do you experience, you know, in your day to day at Ardenwald and across the district around childcare needs of families?
Testing. I know that we have an abundance of families asking to participate or how can they participate in our after-school care program that our district helps to partner with? And so just more, I'm not sure how that would work, resources towards after-school care programming, I think would meet a lot of families' needs for what that looks like for them after school. And then also we have.
And his dad was interested in getting him in the after-school program. It's a waitlist of 65 for a school of 411 kids.
And finding childcare is particularly very difficult for families that have children with disabilities. So that makes it quite a barrier for them.
Thank you. I mean, I remember we were really lucky to get into a care spot, but we started out on the waitlist when we first started at Ardenwald. And, I mean, the program is not like your normal, you know, childcare setting. It's, it's like, it's, it's like, you know, it's like an artist, a special artist studio or like independently taught classes. It's amazing. And for students that are a little bit younger and are feeling, you know, like a little nervous staying away from home even after school, it just, it made our kiddo feel so comfortable and they loved going. So I just really thank you for that. And, you know, I think anything that we can do to advocate for increased resources for programs like CARE, having a waitlist of 65, that's, I mean, that's, it makes me sad. So anything that we can do to help advocate for more resources, I'm in.
Great. Yes, and we are actually working on a letter for, for the Clackamas County Children's Commission for next week's council meeting in support of some more resources. So if there are things that we can help with expressing our support for, please do let us know. We are running kind of behind, so unless there's any, oh, you, okay. You had another question? Please go ahead.
Very quick, of the waitlist of 65, how many slots are available? I'm just curious to see if anybody knows that.
There's a lot of kids. We get some kids bussed over from Oak Grove. So we share our site. So there's a lot of kids and there's a lot of adults. They use several spaces within our school. So it's a big number that are at Ardenwald. And so I don't know exactly how many spots there are, but I would say it's probably over 100.
Oh, wow. Okay, all right. That's, thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else pressing, we will thank you guys for, for coming. And it was a great presentation. Thank you. And now, maybe not quite as full a table, the Low Income Housing Tax Exemption Program proposal. City of Milwaukee staff, Emma Sager, our Assistant City Manager, and Joseph Bruleo, our Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors and directors. It's so great to be with you. My name's Emma Sager. I'm the Assistant City Manager. As Ann mentioned, I'm the daughter of not one, but two educators, including an Assistant Superintendent. And I just first want to say thank you so much to the Ardenwald folks. That was a wonderful presentation. As a, as a kid of educators and as a parent myself, it really filled my cup to just see the passion and amazing leadership we've got in our local schools here in Milwaukee. Tonight, Joseph and I are here to talk to you about something that we have been talking to school district staff about for several months. Ann said that I'm pretty new to this city. And seven months ago, when I started, I think in day one, as we were driving around, I was like, I love schools. Is there any opportunity for some school-city partnership? And she said, I have a project that you can work on. And we, we share values about supporting our most vulnerable community members. And we want to make sure as pressures and costs of living and in costs of housing are increasing, that we are still able to accommodate and welcome families of all income levels to the wonderful schools and the services in the city of Milwaukee. We, as the city, have been exploring a lot of tools to support affordable housing. And there's a few opportunities where we could partner, our two agencies, to advance this shared goal. And one of them is around this nonprofit low-income housing property tax exemption. Say that five times fast. So we're excited to kind of share some thoughts with you tonight about what this could look like. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about why Milwaukee is interested in this. We'll talk about sort of where this program comes from in the context of its, of it in state statute. It has been done before in Milwaukee. So we'll speak a little bit to the example of where it's happened and the success there. And then we'll talk about this proposal we have to make this a tool that we can all benefit from more readily in the future. I'm moonlighting as the interim Finance Director right now, many hats. So we're going to bore you with a few financial numbers too. Because as the word tax implies, there is a bit of a revenue impact here. And we want to be really transparent about what that looks like if you were to decide to move forward with this proposal. So why consider this? Again, I've talked about how we share values of inclusion and equity and making our places livable and environments where everyone can thrive, no matter what their background is. And then I also mentioned that, you know, we're all experiencing this statewide, the rising pressures of housing costs. That pressure is so great that our city council did declare a housing emergency in 2020 and continues to renew that emergency because it has not gone away. We developed a five-year housing action plan in the city to kind of look at all the tools that could be in our toolbox to incentivize construction of affordable housing here. We are a little different than some of the other suburbs around the Portland area where we've built out a lot of our land. So we, we don't have a tremendous opportunity to develop whole new housing developments. We have to look at ways we can build up or we can strategize to get denser housing to allow more folks to call Milwaukee home. A couple of the incentives that we have in use that help us increase the supply of affordable housing include a construction excise tax that we use on, that we charge on development, that we can reinvest in the development of more affordable housing. We had something called the Vertical Housing Development Zone, which gave an incentive to developers to build up in the, in the city, which then increases supply and incentivizes the creation of some affordable units. That did sunset in 2022, but there were several developments that took advantage of the program. And then we've got this one that I'm going to talk to you about tonight, which is the Nonprofit Low Income Housing Tax Exemption Program. Again, could they just come up with a better, shorter title? So that program is a state program. It was authorized by ORS 307540. It was authorized by O R S 307, 540 through 548. And it basically says that property can be exempt from property taxation if the following criteria are met. If it's owned by a nonprofit corporation, if it's occupied by low income persons, which in the first year needs to be 60% median family income or lower, and then 80% all subsequent years, and that has to be recertified annually. So it can't be a development that starts out as serving low income folks and then turns into market rate housing. Then it would no longer apply for the exemption. And finally, to, to, to get access to this exemption, 51% of the local taxing authorities, or 61% of the combined rate need to approve. So you've got to kind of look at your taxing authorities and find that coalition of support to make this happen. We've done that once before. Combined, the school district and the City of Milwaukee represent about 60% of our current local taxing authority. It fluctuates sometimes, but we're, we're a fairly good sized block. And back in 2019, we, we did collaboratively agree to grant the use of this exemption for Walsh Commons, which is a Northwest Housing Alternatives Development right across from Milwaukee High School. That, that was completed in 2019 and has continued to receive this exemption every year by recertifying that it meets those criteria you see on the screen. That was, that was a great process and a great partnership. And that's the way that the, the program can work. Every time a, a development is proposed, we could go to all those taxing authorities and say, hey, can we meet that magic 51% number? Go through all that paperwork and process and boom, make it happen. But other communities who are really like us, interested in, in encouraging this kind of development, have passed legislation that kind of streamlines the process a bit. It allows any eligible property to receive that exemption without needing to do the, every single time, call up all the taxing authorities and see if we can get to that 51%. That saves time for us. There's less kind of administrative burden on the, the entity side, and it clarifies the process for nonprofits. It gets them to a yes, and it gets them more certainty in planning whether they can pencil out the development than if they had to go and wait for all that bureaucratic process to happen. Again, properties are still required to recertify their eligibility annually in the, in the communities that have done this. So it's not like a blanket free check forever. You have to continue to meet the, the benefits of the program. And the cities in the places that have passed this legislation, the cities then provide an annual report to their council and to the county assessor's office that says, here are the developments that, the new developments that have come online that, that meet this criteria and the ones that continue to meet it, or any that have rolled off. So that's what we want to kind of put forth to you for discussion tonight, is if you would be interested in passing a piece of legislation on, from both agencies that would kind of enter into that sort of agreement and partnership and allow us to, to offer this incentive more readily to nonprofits looking to build affordable housing in Milwaukee. Before you probably say, yeah, so that, you're going to want to know, how much tax revenue are we going to forego? So we have a few slides to just kind of illustrate what that impact could look like. And Joseph is the brilliant community development mind here to talk a little bit about these, these scenarios.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Chair, Directors, Councilmembers, Joseph Brillo, Community Development Director. Emma's doing a great job here, just kind of going over the, the background of this program. The, the one that we do have currently in place is the Walsh Commons. It pretty much serves 30%, 60 to the 30% AMI. So we're talking very low and low income families right next to a school. There's 28 units and it was completed in 2019. Its assessed value at currently, at least for the last year, was around 2.6 million. And so looking at the forgone tax to the tax districts, I won't go into each and every, but you'll probably just be most interested in that top number. And then our councils will probably be most interested in the second number. North Clackamas Schools in City of Milwaukee, around, what is that?
Oh.
12,240 for North Clackamas and then around 10,582 annual for the City of Milwaukee.
And so this is only on the housing over there? It's not on their office?
Yeah, correct. Yes.
And just a couple of things to mention here. You'll see wherever there's some bonds, you see a 0%. And that's because that's, that's not factored in. It's, this is really about the, the, the levied rate rather than a bonded rate when this is calculated. So it doesn't impact bonds. And then that asterisk down at the bottom, there, because educational institutions receive formula funding from the state, it's not going to be that full $12,000 hit because the state kind of helps spread the, the impact of that around. So that's, that's sort of the direct calculation, but what, what the school district actually feel is less than that.
So that's, that's the real life example we can, we can share with you. There, I saw a question go up. I didn't know.
No, the question, it's 12 for the general fund and then another 4,200 to the, for the levy? So it's 16,000?
Okay. Correct. Good distinction. Thank you. So that was the Walsh Commons. That's a, that's a real life example. We, we talked about some, how else could we show you what other potential impacts there could be in the City of Milwaukee? We currently don't see a ton of these, and neither would be forecasted, a ton of these coming in. The state legislation has been rolling back quite a bit of barriers for development in general, but those are primarily supporting for-profit market rate developers, those with deep pockets. We certainly, as an agency, as, as a city, we don't have deep pockets. So this is a sacrifice that follows our values. And so we've, we've noted that likely to occur in the future, probably not, but to be ready for it would be fantastic. And so there are a couple of other projects that are currently underway that are using construction excise tax that we've provided as, through a solicitation, basically a bid to get affordable housing units on, on our, on our docket. We have one project called the Milwaukee Short Stack, which is 15 for, 15 for sale units at 100% AMI. So more your workforce development. That's, that's the numbers that we're looking at. We have, we wanted to use them as an example if they were to go the nonprofit route and actually pursue this as a potential tool. And so with that, the breakdown is, is here. So it's a, it's a cottage cluster pretty close to Providence Hospital on, just off Harvey. Roughly 900 square foot cottages, again, for sale. So this is very different as far as the spectrum of affordable housing. Mostly we see multi-unit dwellings that are rent for rent. This is unique in the sense that it will be actually for sale and build that equity and build that wealth, hopefully for, for folks in the future. So this is just an example of a potential one that could possibly use the benefit and the incentive, but would have to go through a per project administrative procedure.
Can you explain? Well, first off, it has to be 80% or less AMI. So, right? So you were saying that one's 100. So that probably would. But if, if it met the AMI criteria, how does it work with an owned unit versus a rented unit in terms of certification every year and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I actually don't know because we don't see for sale often, if ever. Yeah, this would be very unique.
And I believe that the, the owner, the taxpaying entity would be the nonprofit would be correct. So like in this case, if there, I don't know exactly how the cottage cluster would work and if it's sort of, they would convert to any ownership.
So just to, to take it back, this was an example to use that potentially is, it's going to happen, but it, and it's using affordable housing. It's an affordable housing development, but it might not fit this obviously projection in this tool, but it's just an idea of what's actually occurring and how it would break down if it fit all the parameters of the nonprofit low income housing tax credit. And this is just the general breakdown per 1 million of assessed values. That gives you very general. But again, we don't, I don't forecast seeing these types of developers come through the City of Milwaukee. We have, we're very built out, as Emma already said. In order to actually create developmental lands, you'd have to aggregate parcels to, to create a larger parcel to actually build on. We're very parceledized. We're very built out. So it would be, and not only that, you'd have to scrape a very valuable house off of the property. So it would be unique for a nonprofit to come in and, and do those things. So we don't see, again, a, a bunch of these applications coming through, but to be ready and to have a yes at the door would be helpful versus, let's see what happens.
I mean, it could be the Sparrow site, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we do have one site that the city owns that, you know, we will be looking for an affordable housing developer for, so.
Mayor BD, Councilor Stavantord's hand is raised.
Yeah, Councilor Stavantord.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Joseph and I serve on the Clackamas County Housing Advisory Board, and we had our meeting this week in which they were talking about some of the scattered site affordable housing developments. And I was surprised to see so many of them located in Milwaukee. So Joseph, do you think this might be an opportunity for a partnership to, to maybe either acquire some of those sites through a nonprofit partnership or to build out on those parcels? What's your take on that?
Yeah, yeah. So if they're, if, obviously if they're government owned, then they already receive a, a tax abatement. But yeah, those that are, that have the potential to be purchased by a private, you know, a private in the sense of nonprofit in a public partnership, that certainly could be, that could certainly be an option. But without some discussion, I'm a little bit nervous to, to say what the city should do. But it's a good.
Sure, of course. I guess I'm also kind of wondering about the, the, the length of the property tax exemption? Would it be in perpetuity as long as the parcel remains at 60% of median, median income?
No, it's, it's a 10-year abatement as long as it meets those.
Oh, I see.
80%.
Okay. So I mean, this would actually be an advantage to increasing, you know, future tax rolls for our districts.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And just a point that you kind of alluded to, but I mean, county owned housing is already exempt, right? So the hillside, the big site where we're going to see more affordable housing is already exempted. This, that's not part of this discussion. Director McVeigh?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of clarifying questions. You say it sunsets in 10 years regardless of the project?
I'm actually, we, we need to look into that. My understanding is properties recertify annually and they are, as long as the state statute stays the same, they are eligible for it as long as they meet the requirements of the state statute. One of the things we'll be talking about or presenting, if you guys would like to move forward with putting together a, a joint agreement to, to explore this, you could set a time limit on that agreement. So you could say, we will authorize this for a period of 10 years, at which that would sunset.
Okay. Second question that might be for Cindy, but I believe like new developers pay some sort of an SDC fee towards the schools. So would these nonprofit developers be paying any fees that could potentially put more assets into our schools? Or is, is this just the tax or is it also the fees would be waived?
My understanding is the fees are not.
Yeah, this is not part of SDCs. This would just be property tax.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Bauer? That was one of my questions. So the, the development fees are not part of it. Then is there any way that there can be partnerships between the nonprofit and the developers? I've heard in Multnomah County, they did some of that and they were very successful, that they learn from each other. They're, the nonprofit owns it, but the builder developer helps with that other expertise.
Yeah, that could be a potential. Definitely for-profit builders can, can assist in the nonprofit ownership model.
Okay, okay. If ownership changes, it just has to be with another nonprofit, right?
To, to, to continue qualifying for this exemption.
Yeah. And thank you for answering the question about the bonding and pointing out to the weighting that that amount that looks big is supposed to be balanced with our state school fund. So it's not even as big as it looks. Sounds great. Thanks for the information. Director Kemp?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think this looks like a good program. One, one thought I just want to throw out there, maybe out of left field, but I used to do a lot of work with Habitat for Humanity. And I've seen some of those projects go in and I've seen small units where they just do a couple of homes. And I've seen other ones where they get a larger piece of land and, and develop that. I don't know what the tax implications are under habitats programs. I, I never got involved in that side of it. But the one thing I do know in working with a number of those families is they are incredible people, and I think they would be a, a great asset to the community. I just, I've been really lucky to get to know some of these, these families and, and get them into stable housing, which we know helps kids and everybody else in the, in the long run. And one of the few things in this country where the average person can build any wealth is in homeownership.
Exactly. Thank you.
Director Y?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to piggyback on Director Kemp's comments exactly around just obviously the benefit to families and community. And I, you know, I think one of the great things about this type of model or partnership is that I'd be interesting to know what kind of community services are being brought onsite so that again, you know, students, families, particularly, you know, with youth involved can benefit from living in these sites and communities. I see a direct correlation there of how this could be helpful.
I just wanted to thank you guys for taking the step of meeting with the taxing districts because I was concerned when we did this the first time, when we were doing these one-off things and it was like, okay, the, the school district plus the city are the 800 pound gorilla and we have enough of the tax so we can just do it. And I don't think that's a great way to play with your fellow public organizations. So I appreciate that you went out and had these meetings and had these discussions with the taxing districts. And I mean, I, I guess I'm hearing mostly positive, I mean, pretty much all positive all the way around, supportive, not head snotting. So I think everybody's on board.
That's, that's wonderful. I did want to, so you know, what, what is the specific ask we, we wanted to bring to you? And thank you, Mayor, for bringing up the outreach we did do. I, I did not mention that it is in the staff report, but we did reach out to every other potentially impacted taxing authority. We held two kind of drop-in conversations. Several of them took us up on it, not all. And, and really no, no pushback. I think they know there's an 800 pound gorilla in the room, but also, you know, again, I think that everyone understands the need for this, for, for investment in affordable housing. And so, yeah, we were, we were pleasantly surprised or pleasant, we were not surprised, but we were pleased with the response that it got when we did that outreach. So what, what we propose as next steps, if you agree, would be to develop a joint agreement that, that expresses our joint commitment to encourage development of low income housing by nonprofits in Milwaukee. That stipulates that city staff are going to provide that report annually to both entities, and not just to our council, but to the school board as well, and all the local taxing authorities annually each spring. And as I mentioned earlier, we would suggest maybe setting a, a duration of this agreement for 10 years. And then on the city's side, I, I can't speak for what the kind of process is on the school board side, but on the city's side, we would pass a resolution, ideally by June of this year, authorizing that approval, kind of putting this and codifying this for, for those, that 10-year duration. And we really thank you for your time.
Question? Oh, yep. Councilor Costrabadi?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. I'm, I'm a big fan of this because this is something that was brought up in the Housing Capacity Technical Committee. So I appreciate the, the school board being here to, to hear this and being open to, to that as well, because I think it's a huge benefit, obviously. And, you know, historically, that all those tax breaks, as you mentioned, go to the deep pocket developers who don't really need them. So this, this actually gives it to the ones who do need them and who are actually going to do something to, to benefit our community rather than their pocketbook. So I'm looking forward to this. I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Quick comment. I, I think this is great. I do think that devil be in the details and the intergovernment agreement, there's always unintended consequences on any good deed. And so I just need to think that through. And how we fund schools today might not be how we fund schools five years from now. So we'll have to really like think that through and make sure there's language that protects everybody.
All right.
To Director McVeigh's question, maybe what is helpful too is that there is an annual renewal that will still be required, so there is, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Family housing support, family and housing support services, discussion led by Assistant Superintendent of Education Yvonne Dibley. And... More folks. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Beatty, City Council, and Directors. As Dr. James mentioned earlier this evening, the through line of our strategic plan is equity, and as leaders centered in equity, it is our task to identify and remove barriers for students. The following individuals remove barriers for students each and every day, and they remove those barriers for some of our most vulnerable students. It is my distinct privilege to introduce to you Jennifer Dove Kiltow, our Director of Student and Family Services and Integrated Programs, the Associate Director for that department, Barnaby Glouger, and Jalen Roberson, the Liaison for Students and Families Who Are Experiencing Houselessness.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. Super proud to be here and representing our district with our team, so thank you for having us. In recent years, the issue of housing stability has, continues to be a concern for us, and how it impacts the lives of our students, whether due to economic hardships, family circumstances, or other unforeseen circumstances. We find that a number of our students find themselves without stable housing, and we know that this instability not only disrupts their living situations and conditions, but also poses barriers to their educational success and overall well-being. And so our McKinney-Vento team has a crucial role in supporting those students who are experiencing housing insecurities, and really ensures that they have access to the resources and assistance that they need to be able to thrive academically, as well as personally. And we see their role, that team's role, to not just be about compliance with regulations, but really to make a tangible difference in the lives of some of our most vulnerable students, who are just really facing some significant challenges. So tonight, as we go through, Jalen is our McKinney-Vento liaison, and he'll be speaking for the team, but I also want to point out the rest of the team. I don't want to... Which button do I push? This one? Uh-oh. Excellent, thank you. So we have Jalen, and then in the audience, we have Nancy and Vincent, and they are our student and family advocates, and so they work as part of the team as well to support our students at the school level, and our students and families who come into the Wichita Center. So, very important team, doing very important work. And then, we have Barnaby.
Good evening, school board members and city council members. Thanks so much for having us tonight. My name is Barnaby Glouger, Associate Director of Student and Family Services, a department in the North Clackamas School District that is involved of a lot of different supports and programs and supporting positions to support our students and families. One of those programs is our McKinney-Vento team, and I want to give a little bit of background about the McKinney-Vento and share some of the definitions that allows a student or family to be eligible to qualify for McKinney-Vento services. Back in the late 80s, I think it was at first the McKinney Act, later it became McKinney-Vento, that the Congress put into action, noticing that the rise in homelessness for families, and so required states to require school districts to provide services for any student or family identified, at that time homeless. And over the years, that definition has been updated, and so now we are operating based on those definitions and supporting our students and families in those situations. And so if we go to the next slide, I want to kind of break that down a little bit. What you may consider houseless or homeless, the actual definition based on the McKinney-Vento Act is broader than that. So when we discover that a student is living in a situation such as doubled up, that can also qualify them for McKinney-Vento services. And what that looks like is if they are in a shared housing situation due to financial hardship, that they don't have a fixed, permanent, or adequate housing situation. And so that could be doubled up, sharing an apartment, sharing a home with another family, not having a room to themselves, and it wouldn't be adequate in that way. A family may be living in a motel or hotel, short-term, living in shelters, living in a car, or van, or RV. And then we also have another category of students that qualify for McKinney-Vento services, considered unaccompanied youth. And these are students who are not living with their parents or guardians, on their own, maybe couch surfing, living with other families, or in some cases, totally independent, living on their own. And so the McKinney-Vento team, when they become aware of a student or family living in that situation, assesses their living situation to see whether or not they qualify for McKinney-Vento services, and if they do, provide services. If they don't, they will work to support and connect those families with any other resources that our district or the community can offer, but that's kind of a breakdown. Some of the data that we've looked at over the last four years, that ODE, or Oregon Department of Education, compiles, are just the numbers in our district of students that qualify for McKinney-Vento. This is distributed by those different categories, but I think what it shows is that we have around 300 students each year that are living in one of those different situations and qualify for McKinney-Vento. And so that is, those are the numbers that we are seeing consistently, if not more of an increase, so. Next, Jalen is going to present some more on our services.
Thank you. Right here, these are just a few of the barriers. Can we move that thing down? These are just a few of the barriers that we see very commonly when it comes to our McKinney-Vento families. Number one biggest barrier that we see on a day-to-day basis is transportation. Removing the barrier of transportation helps change those numbers that we didn't like when we had our Ardenwell families up here presenting. It's the biggest barrier to our students not going to school. So the first thing that we do when we find out that we have a new family is we assess their ability to navigate getting to and from school every day, and we try to remove that barrier as soon as possible. As soon as we're able to get a student ID generated, we just as quickly will get a transportation request submitted, and that looks a lot different for different families. We have a lot of families that live outside of our school boundaries, which means that they end up getting specialized transportation. One thing good about our district is that we train and vet some of our outside transportation partners that we use, Radio Cab, and our families end up with some of the same drivers. So it's good that they're able to get to school with the same driver that takes them home, they garner a relationship, a lot of communication gets passed off that way, just making sure small things don't fall through the cracks. Next, more importantly, is our limited access to resources. So that may be anything from the ability to pay for after-school activities, sports, care program that you guys heard about, and heard about our waiting list, navigating that waiting list, and getting kids in after-school programs. A lot of families and a lot of moms and dads don't get off work till 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, so being able to navigate that time after school, from when our parents get home, keeping kids active, and different enrichment programs and things like that. Access to food, access to different healthcare needs, insurance, SNAP benefits, different things, as we run the gamut of just trying to make sure our families have access to all of these resources in our district. Education, our biggest thing about education is just, the letter of the law for McKinney-Vento in short, pretty much just says, when there's all this displacement going on in your life and your housing situation, the one thing that should maintain and stay stable is schooling. So we're able to work with different districts, other community partners, to make sure that we're able to kind of keep students in their safe places, in places where they already have relationships outside of their homes. Top, some of our issues that we have with our students in the building, some of the stigma and social isolation things is, the biggest thing is for our families that are having housing issues, negative interactions with their peers around their housing, instability can cause different social, emotional, mental issues that we try to make sure that we're supporting the families around, and making sure that we're able to keep students engaged in school and not going into social isolation, and spending a lot of time with our engagement specialists and our other social workers inside the school. Health concerns, having that situation where their houselessness falls right into our healthcare needs, lack of healthcare, insurance, making sure that we're able to get vaccinations done, immunizations done before exclusion day. Our exclusion day is coming up here really soon, so we're working along with our healthcare team to make sure that these students are getting their proper vaccinations and things done before exclusion day to keep them in school, keep them engaged in the social things that we have going on at our schools. Another big one here is our documentation, obtaining records. One thing that we're able to do is, if you have been qualified for McKinney-Vento, is that we don't hold up students. You have the right to start school. You have the right to start school without your records. We get kids enrolled, and then we backtrack and get their records and get everything in, but we do not allow students to be held up from entering our schools for the lack of any of our records and things, normal things that you have. Just goes right into our rights. You have the right to immediate school enrollment, meaning that right now, we've had a high influx of enrolled students over the last month and a half, coming from different districts, fleeing different states, and at that time, we start the process to get them enrolled. If there are elements of McKinney-Vento, our team gets involved, we work through that, we get students involved back in school, and then we just kind of go from there and support them. The right to remain in the school of origin is the biggest thing. There are times that families are fleeing domestic situations, and you're not able to unenroll or re-enroll the proper way, when we know that the law says, when you have movement, the one thing that should stay the same is schooling. A domestic situation can cause that to not be a safe place to keep a kid in the same school. So we'll work with that family, we'll work with other community partners to make sure that their addresses are protected, and that we can get them in school and support them around being in a new environment. Receiving transportation, talked about it a little bit, it's the biggest thing. It's the biggest thing right now in our district that is, can keep consistently a kid coming to school or consistently not coming to school, which can affect them being 10-day dropped. Those are all things that we collaborate from the different buildings to make sure that we are able to get in front and get in a kid re-engaged before they're being dropped from school. And then last but not least, educational support, academic support, everything from our tutoring. We have a lot of high school students that like to come back and tutor some of our middle school, elementary school kids, it's more like a mentorship as well, making sure that they're getting their proper testing, making sure they have access to getting FASFA done, any other documents that they need, IDs, birth certificates. We support families from the beginning to the end of this process of being rehoused and removing this barrier of houselessness.
So, our team works really hard to meet families where they're at, to meet students where they're at, and support them through this process. And as you can imagine, if you're experiencing situations in your family, and there's a lot of movement and a lot of uncertainty, it's really important to have people that you can engage with, engage with, that are truly caring. And so I'm really grateful to our team that can do that, and to our school district that's able to provide this level of support for our families. We also have additional supports within our schools, so the first list are different people in our schools, different supports in our schools that support, and oftentimes are the first people that our students say, "Hey, I'm experiencing this," or a family may go to a school counselor and say, "Hey, this is my situation," and then they're the folks in the schools that connect with our McKinney-Vento team. So we have social workers, school counselors, we have mental health therapists that we partner with, we have substance use and drug counseling, engagement specialists, our nursing team, and our school-based health centers, and of course, lots of other community partnerships that are in our schools on a daily basis. And then, of course, we have the Wichita Center, where people come to get their basic needs met around food, hygiene, clothing. It's a place where our oral health team resides, and they're in and out to the schools to make sure kids' dental health care is taken care of. And then DHS is there, WIC is there, the foundation is there supporting us, and of course, those preschool programs are there. All places where our families who are experiencing housing insecurities, food insecurities, can go and get support. So with that, we thank you, happy to answer any questions you may have. And up come the geese.
Yes, they do. I think Director McVeigh was first.
Great presentation, this should be presented to lots of community organizations. You put up there Wichita Center, and a lot of the services that you're describing, these wraparound services are provided by community and county offices there. On a scale of 1 to 10, having all these in one location, what would you give that as a rating?
20.
So extremely important to have all these services.
It's vital to our district, it's what makes our district special, it was what separates our district from everyone else. Wichita is a priority for us and our families. A regular Tuesday will serve over 100 families before 4:00, just on food and clothes, let alone the other community resources that we have there that they access on a day-to-day basis, and our drop-ins for our McKinney-Vento families. Thanks to my supervisors and our team, we also manage our emergency housing assessments, so if you don't qualify... So if you don't qualify for McKinney Vento, you still will work with us to be reassessed for your housing or any other needs that you have around housing or food or whatever it is. So just having the ability to give a soft no that you don't qualify for McKinney Vento, but still assist them in their housing needs or their utility needs are very important. So I would say, um, Wichita is very, very, very important to, um, all the resources and services that we provide there.
I'm assuming that some of these services, folks don't even know that they might qualify for, could qualify for if they weren't all there and you guys sort of helped them access that, so thank you very much.
Um, Director Bauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the essential work that you do for our vulnerable population. It's so important and the barriers to all of these things you listed, um, interfac- I mean, impact our kids, our students, I mean, their learning. It impacts our whole community, we can't thrive. And I thought, you know, our whole community, our county, that those were goals that were really important. Um, I just find it very ironic that, you know, we're looking for a home. I can't help but say it, that our time is limited to solve, where is our home for all of these resources? And I think we need to let our decision-makers know, you know, that how important this is. There's been work done in the county to show that this area of our community is very vulnerable. These are children, these are the people that need these services. So I was going to ask the same question, the fact that you have all of those resources in one building, you gave a 20. How important is it also that these resources not be interrupted?
I would say seconding that would be the, how accessible Wichita is. Um, being on a bus route, um, being by other grocery stores and other little promenades in that area is probably just as important as us having Wichita, is where Wichita resides, how accessible it is to the district. Um, it houses a couple of different Head Start preschool programs there. So, um, it's something of, it's just as important where it is as much as the work that we do at Wichita.
Thank you.
Director Wfter?
Thank you for sharing this, uh, critically important program, another one, uh, that you're, that you're leading out in for our school district. And, um, a couple of careers ago, I was a Medicaid, um, health plan leader and, uh, we had 90,000 folks on that health plan. And I can tell you that what I'm hearing from the level of care, but also the level of organization of these services that you are helping our students with and these families with, is commendable. You are doing incredible work and that's primarily, I think, through, you have a heart for the work, but also you're well organized and well-led. So thank you for, for stretching out your hand in offering support to these students and these families. We, we want to support you in this effort and you have our hearts in, in this work as well.
Director Kemp?
I think, um, it was, the question was already asked. Um, I was going to ask about that location and how vital. I've been hearing that for quite some time, how important that location is for the Wichita Center because of mass transit and other services around it. Um, it just seems vital to make sure other leadership in the county understands how important that location is. And so many families have been going there for quite some time. And it, it houses, you're able to keep all those services there. I, I think what I've heard is some of the other options are not nearly as, um, cohesive and would keep all the services together, which I think is really vital from what I'm hearing and what I've already heard in past discussions. Thanks very much for the, this, your presentation and description of the work you do.
Yeah, I think the work you do is so important and I know, I hear all the time from people, uh, and I have some people in this room actually, about how important the Wichita Center is. Um, I sit, and one of the other hats I wear as a council member is I sit on the North Clackamas Parks and Rec District Advisory Committee and we were notified just before Christmas of the termination of the lease, which I had had a conversation with someone in the school district offices. He said, "Oh no, we're good till 2026." And then like two weeks later, the news comes down, but they're, um, so, um, yeah. I, I ask at those district advisory committee meetings, um, what's going on with Wichita Center? And I'm told that the county is in discussions with the school district about the future of that building and potential purchase back of that building. Um, I hope that's the case. Um, if not, I do, yeah, I think your county commissioners are where you need to focus your energy. Um, they are the decision-makers for that, um, for that, for the current owner of that building, the Parks District. And, uh, yeah, yeah. I think it's, you know, for all the thing, all the things you said about, you know, the bus line. I know there are some other schools that are, you know, maybe not in use that could potentially be moved to, but they're not. They don't have that accessibility that, that Wichita has. And it's pretty central in the district. I mean, it's, so, um, yeah. Oh, go ahead. Oh, okay.
Thank you. Um, thank you for this report and just sharing your experience and your story. Um, and Jelum, I think we met at the Wichita Center actually at a community event, open house. And, um, I was just able to get to know you a little bit more too, just as a person and, um, just with your experience working with students and our young people in our district. And I really do believe that in, not only in addition to the services that, you know, you're connecting families and students with, like you are a stable force in their lives. And so many of you who may also be out there in the audience or listening, um, you are that stable force in so many of the young people's lives that you serve. And I just, I just thank you. Thank you for being that stable presence. Um, I do have a question for Jelum. What are, what are our young folks who are in the program seeing about their experience in our schools? Um, obviously we would provide them with a lot of support, but I'm just, I'm so curious, um, because kids are honest, let's be real. Youth are very real. Um, what else are they needing from the board, from the adults in their lives?
Uh, I would say right now, um, the biggest thing would probably be, um, just your support with allowing the district to keep growing the way that it's growing and just hiring good people and, uh, hiring from within. Um, it's something that this district does a lot and just elevating people to the next step so their familiar faces do stay around, I think is the biggest thing for us right now. Um, growing our community partners. We do not have a lot of shelters out here. Um, we do not have a lot of access to, um, student activities outside of school here. Um, those are things that need to grow as much as possible, um, to help the growth of the youth that we serve in this area.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Director Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to clip my thoughts. Um, three years ago, uh, we invited a homeless family to double up with us. And, um, it was an amazing experience, um, in community and, um, and kindness. And I can't say exactly what we got from it or what they got from it, but all I can say is that we're all better for the experience of having helped each other. Um, and that's like a feel-good story, right? Like yay, yay me, we, you know, we did this great thing. This should not have happened. They should not have been in this position. We should have systems in place that provide continuity of care so that our vulnerable populations who are fleeing, in this case, domestic violence and abuse are not relying on the kindness of virtual strangers to, you know, pluck them up and rescue them. We shouldn't need Cinderella stories like that. And, um, and I know that the McKinney Vento program and the Wichita Center specifically provide that continuity of care, provide that system that students and families can rely on so that, um, so that they don't need to, you know, pray for a miracle, um, to unplug them up off the streets. And, um, I think it is appalling and morally repugnant that the Wichita Center and the services it provides our community find themselves in a situation where they need to scramble to continue to provide that continuity of care for our most vulnerable residents. I'm so thankful for everything that you do and I just want to assure you that we will do absolutely everything in our power to help make sure that that care is still available for the people who've come to count on it so much. So thank you.
Ma- Mayor Beatty, uh, Councilor Stavon Jordan's hand is raised.
Uh, Councilor Stavon Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you so much for all of the work that you do. And, and the impact that it has on members of our community is immeasurable. Um, so I, I want to say that, um, you know, I'm very grateful for the, the work being done around, um, housing instability on the district side. And I'm grateful for the conversation this evening because, um, I think it really is a, an opportunity for us to build stronger collaboration and partnership with the school district. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. Um, I had a couple of, uh, remarks that I wanted to make here. The, um, the city recently put forth, um, applications to Clackamas County through the city-led programs, um, that would be funded. Um, it was a solicitation for supportive housing services funding. And one of those, um, applications was for increased short-term rental assistance. Um, so my, my question, I guess, would be of the school board. Um, it, I know that the deadline for this has passed, but the consideration period is still open. The county is still deciding on, um, you know, how they would fund some, if not all, of these applications. And I wonder if we could work with you as a board to submit a letter of support for, um, some of the applications that we put forth specifically around the housing stability as it would be applicable to, um, students and families in the district. Um, and then I, I just really appreciate, um, Director Thompson, your remarks that I, I feel, um, similarly about the Wichita Center and how intensely needed those services are for our communities. And I guess I'm wondering, um, you know, how can the city be of assistance? Um, you know, to, to secure a location, um, within the Milwaukee area so that those services can continue?
I'm looking around the room and no one's jumping to, um, answer that question, but, um...
I was just going to say, our, our Assistant Superintendent Cindy Detchin might have some things to say, uh, in regards to that.
Thank you for the, the question. Uh, Cindy Detchin, Assistant Superintendent Operations. Um, I've been in communication with, uh, the county, uh, administration once we received our notification at the end of, of December. Um, we met the first week of January. Um, we, we have potentially the possibility to purchase the building. That is, I'm, I'm hoping an option, they seemed open to that possibility. Um, I, I haven't heard from them since on if they have a number. Um, but in the meantime, we've been continuing to look at any vacant properties. I've toured a couple myself, I have our, our railtors active in that effort. Unfortunately, there's not a lot, um, of empty, uh, facilities that would meet our needs. Um, they're either extremely large, need, um, millions and millions of dollars of renovation to make them ADA accessible, they're not on a bus line, um, they just do not meet our needs in any way, shape or form. So, um, unless I, I think, I appreciate Councilor Stavner's, uh, question, I, I don't think, unless you have a magic wand, um, that we're aware of any building that is available at this time.
Director Bauer?
I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Director Bauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there is, in the past, the county has made agreements with, um, other entities like the Parrot Center, changing titles for a dollar. They understood that we're working together for our communities. So there's been precedent set. And then it was also, I was given the information, but I haven't verified it, that the Happy Valley, um, Library, when they formed the Library District, that there may have been that. So, um, and there's a precedence there, that precedence that we can work together to do some of that. But it has to be both sides talking and working together for our community. Thank you, Cindy, for the information. Um, I mean, I, yeah, I don't want to, uh, I mean, I'm sure you guys know how to find out when the county commission is meeting in various, in its various capacities with the various hats it swears, but it will meet as the Board of the Parks District, I think, in March at some point. And that, for people who want to be heard, that may be a place to be heard.
Yeah, I check that weekly to look at their business meetings. Um, they're, right now it just says currently there are nothing, is nothing scheduled. So I'm sure you have some inside information being on the advisory committee, so I appreciate that. Uh, we'll continue to look at it, um, a- as much as we can. Um, and, uh, you know, we have, we have numbers, we know what we sold it to them for and, or what they, they purchased it from us from. It was a much bigger part of a property swap, um, but we're, we're very much interested in that. I have been talking to the interim Parks Director, um, you, you know, every couple of weeks and we, we keep abreast of what the Parks needs are because we did exchange a lot of services, um, for that, for that purchase. And so the Parks District is very interested also in a continued partnership and we value that partnership very, very much. Um, they get a lot of gym and field facility use in exchange for us operating out of the Wichita building that they, they own. So we've appreciated that strategic partnership since 2018. Uh, we'd love to continue it or, um, create something new out of it. Um, but we know that these are services that are vital to our community and we are absolutely committed to maintaining them.
Great. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to hear that and I think many people in Milwaukee will be happy to hear that. Um, because like I said, I'm hearing a lot of concern. Any final questions? Oh, sorry, right in front of my face. Director Thompson?
Um, Director Bauer, what was the purchase price of, um, the land that was sold to the Happy Valley Library for their expansion?
Well, I need to check that out, but I was told it was also a dollar to, for changing the title, the same as the Parrot Creek, I believe.
Also $1?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
That's what I was told, but I have not checked that out. I tried Googling it, but I couldn't find it.
Yeah, just, and just to clarify, the, I'm also Board Chair for the Parrot Creek Child and Family Services and, uh, the, the $1 cost was for 80 acres. Uh, so we know that, and the buildings on those 80 acres were extraordinarily deficient, uh, in terms of the, the maintenance and upkeep on them. So, uh, Parrot Creek inherited some 1963 buildings for a dollar and 80 acres and we are reconstructing the whole campus. But we know that the county can support a, a transaction like that and, uh, I'd like to call on them to do that.
Uh, Councilor Kosterbadi?
I'm just curious, like, did they just say, "Hey, we're canceling your lease"? Like, did they give you a reason why or, I mean, is there, I mean, I think I know, but I'm curious.
Uh, thank you for the question. There is, uh, so there's an intergovernmental agreement that was, um, signed by both entities- There is, so there's an intergovernmental agreement that was signed by both entities, Clackamas County Commissioners, and I will say, they wear two hats. The Clackamas County Commissioners are also the NCPRD Board, so the Parks Board. So, the Parks Board at that time, signed by the Chair, which was the county commissioner at the time, and the North Clackamas School District. In 2018, we went engaged in this larger property swap, and it involved Concord Elementary, Clackamas Elementary, Wichita, in an exchange for Hoodview, which was the Parks District at the time owned that very large softball complex, turf field softball complex, and we had just purchased that adjacent property, and we're building a brand-new, or adding on to that middle school, and we're adding a high school in there, and we knew we would need those fields. We were prepared to build a whole bunch of brand-new fields, it made no sense to build new baseball and softball fields when we had that there. So, it was a win-win. It was a very, very positive exchange. We paid $14 million for Hoodview, and in exchange, they got these other three buildings. And so, that, so overall, it was an $18.75 million, I think, deal, and then, it was like $1.37 million was for Wichita. The other pieces of the intergovernmental agreement are all done. They're not just sunsetted, but they were complete. The only thing that's left in that IGA is the fact that they own Wichita. We maintain it, at least the daily operations of it, they're supposed to maintain the larger pieces of it, and then, we operate out of it. And they have several county offices there that you've heard about this evening. In that IGA, there is an out clause that every agreement should have, and that allows either party to give 180 days' notice to terminate the IGA early. And while, and so Mayor Beatty alluded to the 2026, originally, that was 2021, and then, we had an addendum, because they weren't quite ready, and we weren't ready, and so it's been pushed out. So, the only portion of that agreement that remains is that Wichita part, which was to Sunset in 2026, they exercised their right to offer that 180 days' notice, they did that in due time. There was not a reason given in the letter we received, but in our conversation, you know, it's just about them focusing on the needs that they have, and this building was not something that they wanted to maintain or own any longer.
Sounds like anything community-related they don't want to do these days, but thank you for that, because that gives some context to what's been going on, and shows that regardless of the services provided, they clearly don't care, unfortunately.
Director Thompson? Do you have two keys?
Tori couldn't handle his goose. No, your cattle was in the way.
Oh, okay.
Assistant Superintendent Detchin, as part of the intergovernmental agreement, did NCSD sell the Wichita Center to Clackamas County Parks at market rate?
No, it was below market rate. I wasn't involved at this level of the negotiation at that time, but I was overseeing our communications department, so we wrote press releases together, and so I was definitely aware of it. I wasn't at the negotiating table, so I don't exactly, I didn't see those portions of it, but, you know, $1.37 million for that kind of a property is not market rate, and so, but...
So, well below.
Yes, yes, and I don't know what the value of Hoodview was, but definitely, there was a win-win in both directions at that time.
No hands raised? Okay. I guess we are winding down. I appreciate your presentation, I think it was very informative, and I'm glad we're recording this, because I think a lot of people out there will find it informative. If there's nothing else, I guess we're ready to adjourn. Is that right? Nobody's, yeah, okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
So, we moved a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? Say no? None heard? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Bring me all the geese.
Thank you. You're a sheepherder. You're a sheep-herding dog, or a goose-herding dog.